Do you decide or I decide? I didn't know. This is the only one that did that to us.
Good evening, Littleton. Welcome to the Select Board meeting, June 14th, 2022. We will begin tonight as we usually do with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Clerk?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I beg your pardon. Mr. Sanders has corrected me. Today is the 13th. I should know that because yesterday was my son's birthday. I'm a terrible, terrible father. A very brief run through the agenda first. Department and Board updates. We're going to begin with the Fire Department. Two presentations regarding standard operating procedures and our medical billing vendor. Parks and Rec exemption request for vendors and seasonal staff. The Planning Department is looking to approve a contract for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. Acceptance of gifts from Grimes Lane Investments. Approve of the Office Coordinator Administrative Assistant for the Land Use Department. A donation from Ed's Weenies, as is our custom. Elder and Human Services Tax Abatement Discussion. Finance Department Year End Transfers and Bond Anticipation Notes, which all of us have been signing for the last 45 minutes. Following that, we'll have public input at 7:15. At 7:25, we'll have Board appointments for Affordable Housing Trust, Clean Lakes, CPC, Council on Aging, Cultural Council, Disability Commission Finance, Permanent Municipal Buildings, Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Shaker Lane Building Committee, which is a newer committee. At 8:00 PM, Select Board Discussion of Annual Performance Reviews for the Town Administrator, Police Chief, and Fire Chief, and a discussion about next steps at the Orchard. At 8:15, the Town Administrator Update. Another agreement with LLB for the Senior Center. A contract for Project Management Services for the Senior Center, and a discussion of our Town Administrator's unused vacation time. 8:25, we'll approve the minutes, and as we usually do, we will adjourn at exactly 8:30 PM. So, thank you for attending, everybody. So nice to see all of you. Mr. Administrator, would you like to begin with the Department Updates?
Sure. So, there's a number of things on here, and I'll go through them quickly. The first thing is the LELWD Notice. It's a second notice that they sent about Sewer Connection extending the date to June 30th. They also have a forum that's planned for tomorrow night at 7 o'clock in their offices at 39 Air Road. The second issue is an open house that the Littleton Robotics are having on Saturday, June 18th, from 3 to 5 at their workshop, 20 Harvard Road, Building D, at the Patriot Beavard Campus. The next item is unfortunate, but we applied for the Shared Streets and Spaces Program, and we were denied. So, that was a letter of, "Thank you, but not this time." The next letter in your packet is the One-Year Renewal Agreement from the Chover Associated Boards of Health that'll run through June 30th of '23. The next notice that you have in there is an informational notice from Mast Dot that they're going to be doing some repaving work on Route 2 from Littleton Road Bridge to east of Whitcomb Ave Bridge. And that's in Harvard and Littleton. And then the last three items are just some note programming changes from Verizon and Xfinity.
Thank you very much. The next item is the Fire Department. SOPs and SOGs utilizing LexiPol. If you would please announce your name for the viewers at home and your position.
Robert Connor, Fire Chief of the Town, through the Chair. Thank you for having me. So, one of the things in the first five or six weeks that I really looked at was standard operating procedures and guidelines within the Fire Department. And what I found is that when I looked for how one might do something, I couldn't find it. Or it was outdated and no longer relevant. So, as the manager, leader of the Fire Department, it's hard for me to ask those who are working for me to do the right thing when I can't find what the right thing is to do. LexiPol is a company that does this on a sort of a standardized basis, and they do it taking into account national standards, local standards, consensus standards. And the other thing that they do is they provide training. So, they help us develop these protocols, guidelines, and we put them into play. And then they have bulletins for standards and training. And it's all computerized, and it's all essentially tracked so that when somebody isn't sure what to do or they do the wrong thing, we can look back and say that there's a history of, yes, you signed this, you understand this policy or this procedure. And it just gives us a good foundation. The first two tiers that we looked at were the high-risk and the high-liability tiers, which really encompass a lot of the operating things that we need to worry about, just to start for now. It'll probably take a solid year to 18 months to get those implemented. Take into account that we do have to review them. There are some bargaining items that we might have to discuss with the contract. So, I didn't want to opt for putting the whole program in place with five tiers, because then we're paying for a product that we're not actually using in that first year. So, the option later would be, once we finish this first section, would be to get all of the other tiers as they become applicable. And anything in the first two tiers that's not applicable to our apartment, we can exchange for ones that are. So, the cost that we have is, for the first year implementation, is just under $12,000. It's $11,700 and change. And then after that, it's a $9,000 a year investment for those first, those first two tiers. To add a tier after that would be a little bit more, a little bit more. But we would be able to evaluate after that first year where we're at.
If you didn't hire them, how would you go about updating these, and how much would it cost?
So, the cost and overtime for us to establish a committee, considering that it's a four-hour minimum if we bring somebody in for a meeting, would far outweigh what this is and the time that it would take. So, for us to look at, because what it would be is us looking at other departments, combining those, and then seeing what works and what doesn't. And my inclination is that it would probably take anywhere, because I've done this before, four years, between three and four years, just to get what would be covered in those first two tiers. And by that time, they'll have no training on it. We'll have them done, we'll implement them, and we'll have four years go by without those products. So, I really do see it as a value. And it does put us in, there's other departments around us. You know, if we were to go for accreditation, so to speak, this type of documentation is paramount to obtain accreditation.
Do any other Board members have questions or comments?
I think just the way you summarized at the end there, if bringing LexiPol or some other professional organization that does just this and specializes in this is going to free up your department to do what they are trained to do. I mean, although they are very much hand in glove, I think that it makes sense to make the investment to make sure that we get the best product that we can out of our department.
I guess you mentioned, you are familiar with other towns that have utilized the program?
Yeah. Westford just utilized it. Acton, I want to say Boxborough as well. So, some surrounding communities. And they have had nothing but great things to say about the process. They're on the state business list, so it makes it easy for procurement reasons.
Okay. And I guess lastly, what if, I mean, there's training involved to each member of the Fire Department for this?
Yeah. And that's provided by LexiPol. So, what they do is they send out bulletins, basically. And it's all through the computer. So, if somebody goes in, they log in, and part of the SOPs that are developed is you will do this training.
That was the next question. So, there is a standard that they have to do it? Or so that would be something that probably has to be written during the contract?
No, because that falls under training. That's under management rights. Yeah. So, no, that's covered.
All right. Thank you.
Do we have a motion on this?
Nope. It is just informational.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And medical billing?
Phase two. One of the things that I found when I came in was that we had, we use Coastal for medical billing, but we didn't have an executed contract. How or why, I'm not sure. But we're looking to do that now. So, we went out for quotes last year, and then maybe sometime in the transition, this kind of got lost in the wash. So, they've been doing our medical billing for up to a year without a contract. So, this is just closing that loophole and allowing us to continue their service into the next, into the next two years.
And so, it's a three-year contract, but it really started a year ago?
It's a one-year contract with the option to extend. So, we would extend it one year and then extend it another year.
Any questions about this?
No.
They've been doing it, they've been doing it just without a contract.
Just to hear that.
Yeah. They've been doing it without a contract. So, yeah, I mean, the liability, obviously, is that they could say, well, we're going to charge 5% now instead of 3%, not that they would.
They have them charging 3% since last June.
Yeah. And as far as I know, that's a pretty close industry standard.
Okay. I guess we're ready for a motion?
Move the Select Board vote to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the contract with Coastal Medical Billing LLC for ALS ambulance billing, covering the period from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2023, with an annual fee of 3% for receipts collected by the vendor.
Second.
The motion's been made by Chuck and seconded by Cindy. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
We're official.
Chief.
We're in a contract.
Right. Next up, Parks and Rec, Seasonal Staff Exemption Request. Hello?
Hello. All right. This is not a new request. We've done a couple of these. We've kind of been ramping these up just a little bit, just so you know that the idea of being able to work with some of the school teachers is something that is part of our spirit of doing collaboration. And so, we are trying to work with some of those teachers. So, the request tonight is for three teachers, so Tricia Bonacore, Todd Shoemaker, and Margaret Gillan, to be able to have the exemption so that they could teach. There's two of them, Tricia and Todd, that would like to teach an archery class. They're already doing an archery club with the school. And Margaret Gillen is a high school Spanish teacher, but she would like to be able to teach a class to do bilingual play with pre-K kids, which is pretty cool. And then last, and most definitely not least, Marilyn Fidel. She's going to work for us this summer to help us out with our LEAP program, which will be based out of the middle school. And just as a reminder, as I typically have done in the past, the hours that they use that they're, you know, doing through this time has nothing to do with any of the other positions that they may hold. All of the hours will most definitely be under 500 hours over the course of a year. So, there's no connection at all to the position that they currently hold.
Great. Are there any questions or comments from the Board?
I don't have any.
All right.
I have a comment. I appreciate you bringing this forward, and I know it's something that we've struggled with and run into and bumped up against countless times with teachers and firefighters and police officers and folks that are employed by the town that have been basically shut down from being able to hold another position in the town. And I don't think that the master in the law crimes punishment in proceedings in criminal cases, I appreciate you including it and giving us the...
Scared me.
But I know that there's, there's not another municipality in, at least not in our sports district, within the Mid-Watson Central Mass region, that does this and requires this. And none of them have ever gotten pinched or tripped up or anything with it. I appreciate you bringing it forward. I plan on making the motion and having us approve it. But I think that it's something that was set in place by a previous employee, and I...
Absolutely.
I'm not going to agree with you, Alicia, no matter what you say. I seriously spent six years looking at this with the School Department when I was on School Committee. And it's just, I don't see this master in the law aligning with what we're trying to accomplish. It's not the intent of the law, in my opinion, and many other people's opinions.
Alicia Nonley Benjamin, Finance Director. Your Honorable Body, I just want to clarify for the motion. You can't vote a name, but you can vote a position. I just wanted to...
I will agree with that. I made an assumption. We know what happens.
So, does the motion need to be changed?
Yes.
Okay.
Just put instructors for Park and Rec.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess we're ready for the new motion, while you are, Mr. Clerk.
Move the Select Board vote to approve the exemption of interest and authorize the Town Administrator to sign the disclosure by municipal employee of financial interest in the municipal contract as requested by general law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B, for Park and Rec positions.
As instructors for Park and Rec.
As instructors for Park and Rec.
Sounds good to me.
Does that work for everybody? I don't think it covers all the bases, but I don't think this whole thing covers all the bases, so.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Move by Chuck, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thanks. You too. All right. Next up, we have Land Use and Buildings Department. No, sorry, Planning Department. Sorry. Please. Well, you know.
Maureen.
Good evening, Maureen, Two-Hill Town Planner. First issue is the Littleton Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. MAPC has provided us with a scope of services and a timeline. And this request is to ask you to approve that, approve the Town Administrator to be able to sign that contract. The one request we heard was to make sure that we include trails in the discussion as the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan moves forward, and that is included in the scope of services.
Great. Are there any comments on the contract?
The only thing I asked, I sent an email late today to Anthony and to tomorrow, and just saying, if we had, just an overview of what this looks like on a map, I think that'd be helpful, just what's proposed. And there's all kinds of things that we would love to do. But, you know, we could put dotted lines and say, you know, we'd love to be able to connect these two trails and that kind of thing, just to really be able to quantify it on a map and see it through the GIS system. I think it would be a good visual, not just for us, but for the public in general, because that way we can get support behind it.
Exactly. Which is one of the reasons to do a master plan, is through the process you get the great map.
Yeah.
And how is B-PAC going to be involved in this?
B-PAC will be requested to be involved.
Okay. Very good.
Yes.
All right. Any other comments?
No.
If not, we're ready for a motion.
Move the Select Board vote to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the contract with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, MAPC, to conduct the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, with MAPC contributing $21,750, Littleton contributing $20,000.
Second.
Moved by Chuck and seconded by Cindy. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for all your work on this.
Next.
All right. And the next item, Grimes Lane.
Yep. Acceptance of a gift from Grimes Lane Investments LLC for $30,000, funds for affordable housing.
Great. Any questions or comments from the Board?
I do, Mr. Chair. Maureen, do we know which fund this is going to go into for the Affordable Housing Trust? I know we had one fund that we were filtering things through the CPC, and then we kind of had another fund that we were keeping out separately.
That would be a policy decision by others. So, I presume others is by the Select Board. My recommendation is that it be deposited to the general fund marked as Affordable Housing Funds, and then go through the process of being transferred to CPC for the state match and then transferred to Affordable Housing Trust.
At the special, special town meeting.
Okay. The only reason I bring that up is, as you know, the CPC limits us with special projects that we do for housing. Whereas if we have funding set aside into a separate fund that's not beholden, so to speak, to the CPC, we have a little bit more flexibility what we can do with that money. So, we could, I mean, and I understand that we get the match if we do filter it through the CPC. We get more benefit from it. But it's just something, I think maybe the Affordable Housing Trust needs to have a conversation about going forward, just to see as we identify our goals going forward in the future.
But we don't have to decide which fund to put it in now, right?
Um...
We don't?
It's going into the general fund.
Okay. So, let's leave it there, and then the next H.T. meeting, I think, we can have a discussion about where to put it. Because I agree with you, having a little bit that's not limited by the CPC can be useful.
Right. Right. Great. Thanks, Maureen.
Anyone else have comments? If not...
Move the Select Board vote pursuant to Master in the Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, and per its policy on solicitation, acceptance of monetary and non-monetary gifts for public purpose, to accept a donation to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund from Grimes Lane Investments LLC in the amount of $30,000.
Second.
Moved by Chuck and seconded by Cindy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Mullen?
Maureen, this is great.
Might be on time.
Don't jinx it!
Good evening, Select Board, Ed Mullen, Land Use and Buildings Director. I'm here tonight to ask for approval for an Office Administrator, sorry, Office Coordinator Administrative Assistant to Grade Eight Step Four, Brenda Pelletier. I hope you guys have her resume in your packet. She was an excellent candidate. We had advertised. We got eight applicants. We selected four to interview, and she rose to the top right away. And with HR's help, we went out and wrote an offer and with some negotiation, we got to this number. We brought it to the Town Administrator and hoped that he would put it before you guys for approval. He thought it was a reasonable offer, so it's before you tonight for approval.
Great. Any comments or questions from the Board?
No.
Well, that was my only question, so.
Yeah. I did say, anything above a Step Three has to go to, vetted through me, and then eventually comes to the Select Board, and I have no problem with this.
Mr. Clerk?
I trust that the Director feels as though this is the person, and so vetted through Town Administrator and the Director. I'm good.
I just have, my favorite sentence in the packet this week was the comment that you added planned interruptions to her Excel test, which I think is, I like that you're, you know, you're creating a real-life environment, I guess is what I'm saying. All right. We're ready for a motion.
Move that the Select Board approves Ms. Brenda Pelletier's hiring for the Land Use and Buildings Office Coordinator Administrative Assistant at a Grade Eight Step Four.
Second.
Moved by Chuck, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Mullen. Next up, Elder and Human Services with our monthly...
Ed money.
Ed money. That's right.
Hello. Good evening. Liz Trudiac, Director of Elder and Human Services. And I am here with yet another generous donation from Ed's Weenies. This time, we have $1,085 that was donated for Littleton families in need. And I do just want to point out that we're almost at the $10,000 mark for a cumulative donation amount from Ed's Weenies specifically for this cause for our community. So, I'm here to request that we accept this generous donation.
Any comments from the Board?
Just that it might be about time to do some type of a certificate or something nice for him. Present it probably in a public setting, if possible, just to...
We've talked about that before. But we should do it.
Yeah.
Any other comments? All right. Mr. Clerk?
Move that the Select Board vote pursuant to Master in the Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, and per its policy on solicitation, acceptance of monetary and non-monetary gifts for public purpose, to accept a donation to the Department of Elder and Human Services, EHS, from Ed's Weenies in the amount of $1,085 for assistance for Littleton families in need.
Second.
Motion has been made by Chuck and seconded by Cindy. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Finance Department Year End Transfers is next.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss one?
We've got a tax...
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
After Liz does this, you're next.
Stay close.
Senior tax work off. My bad. Please.
Just there for support.
Okay. Sorry. Senior tax work off.
Okay. So, our senior tax work-off program is probably one of the most robust and popular tax work-off programs that I've encountered in any community in our relative area. One of our goals collectively as department heads and with the Town Administrator was to revamp this program in a way that we can better serve the community. So, right now, a senior tax worker has the ability to earn up to $1,000 as an abatement. Master in the Law says that you can earn up to $1,500. So, that is our first request of the evening. We would like to increase the amount of an abatement that someone can receive through the senior tax work-off program. Now, we've done a lot of research on this. We have met collectively many times. We've went over this with Town Council with a fine-tooth comb. We've met with Anthony, and also the Board of Assessors voted on this as well. So, in order to do that, they approved the overlay account to, instead of give $80,000, $160,000. And that, $160,000, yes. And that was approved by the Board of Assessors. And they gave their blessing for this increase, I guess, so to speak. So, that's the first part of my ask. The second part is to put a 100-person cap on this program, just administratively. It'll make all of our jobs easier. And just historically, for this past year of enrollees, we had 98 participants enroll, and 78 actually completed any amount of hours, whether it was the full amount or, say, five to 10 hours, and then dropped out of the program. What we plan to do going forward is, instead of having a set enrollment period of two weeks, we'll have open enrollments with rolling admissions. We'll keep a waitlist. So, if anyone does drop out of the program throughout the year, then we'll pull someone from the waitlist. They can enroll, and they can participate and take advantage of this great program. Did I miss anything? There's a lot of changes administratively on the back end of this that we're working through. We plan to send out a letter to participants, to future participants, and we're also holding two info sessions in July for current participants, so they can understand the changes that are being implemented to make this happen. We're going to have a little bit of a transition year to be able to improve the program.
That's great.
Yeah.
Do you anticipate there's anything that we can do to help in that transition?
I don't think so.
Don't know what you don't know yet?
It's, yeah. It's spreadsheets. It's paperwork. It's kind of stuff on the backside.
I know they've had meetings on it. You guys worked collaboratively on this, and this is, this is fantastic. So, yeah. Thank you.
I'm just curious where the other $80,000 is coming from. I know it's coming out of the overlay fund, but I'm wondering how that gets funded and how that funding is going to be increased.
Sure. Is it all right if I ask Kathy Miller to answer that question?
Yes, of course. How is the additional $80,000 going to be funded into the overlay account?
It's a toss-up. It's a toss-up question. Anyone can take it.
Alicia Nonley Benjamin, Finance Director. That is actually raised through taxes. So, when we come up with the budget process, and we're doing our revenues and expenses, traditionally, we subtract the overlay before we come up with the number. So, we did have a little reserve on the side, so we were able to absorb that.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sanders, can it wait until public comment?
He might approve of this.
Which is in two items?
Mr. Chairman, I spoke to the Town Administrator before about this. You got items on the agenda that the citizen cannot give you input on it because you've voted through everything already, or just about everything now. Where there was input, it could have been given on this during the public forum, because I had a question about the fact of Park and Recs, as to how those people were determined. Did the town advertise that?
So...
We're a free and equal opportunity employer. So, I'd like to know how those names came up, as to, was anyone else had the opportunity to do that?
I appreciate your question, but, I mean, we're not going to have public debates about every item on the agenda. We just, we don't have time.
Well, I could...
I understand. You can speak to the Town Administrator. You can speak to me outside of this meeting. But we're not going to, we're not going to debate those items during the meeting. And I understand you have questions about them, but, yeah.
But I should have the right, as a citizen, to speak on this agenda, not if you passed everything. Because everything you got here right now that you're voting on, we, as a citizen, should have the right to speak on it.
You have the right to discuss anything you want during public meeting, but during our deliberation on the agenda items, that's for the Board and anyone that we ask to speak to it from, at the podium. But it's not...
But you have all the information, Mr. Chairman, because I sent this program up for the town, for the senior tax program. And I believe Mr. Knox was on here when the Select Board asked me to do it, when Tim Gardner was the Town Administrator. And I had some questions about how you do it, because the town was discriminating against the seniors because they had a tax...
Okay. I appreciate your input. You know, I respect your opinions. But we can't debate every item on... every item on the agenda. And if we, if you want to bring this up with me or any member of the board or the town administrator after this meeting to discuss, I'm happy to do it. But, but we're not going to, we're not going to debate it right now. Thank you. Do, does anyone else have comments on it?
I did have a question about the proxy bank. Can you talk a little bit what your plan is for the proxies?
Sure. So moving forward this year, so the proxy program is something that you can, each local municipality can adopt and accept this proxy program. And we did that, I think 2012, we adopted the proxies. So what that is, if you are someone who is disabled and physically unable to work, or you are a full-time caregiver and unable to leave your person you're caring for at home alone, you can still enroll in this program, and we can assign you a designated work hours for you. So in the past, we've had as many as eight proxies. This past year, we just have one proxy. So moving forward, how we'll do it is, we'll assign one proxy person to one worker to accumulate their hours, so they can still fully participate in the program despite their disabilities.
Great. Any other comments?
How do you qualify to be a proxy member of the program?
Sure. You meet with an EHS staff, either myself or Assistant Director Nicole Sarvella, and we have a list of criteria about if you're disabled or if you are unable to leave your home because you're a caregiver. And that's really all we're looking for. We're not doing any financial restrictions, there's no asset limitations, we're just strictly looking for, are you physically able to do any work? Are you able to leave your home to do work?
If I could follow up to Cindy's question, I'm not sure if this is what you're going after or not. What about the other side of it, for folks that wish to volunteer to be that proxy worker?
To be the proxy. We have plenty of those people. We have more than.
Okay, so there's not, there's not an abundance of folks that are applying, but we do have a little lined up that are willing to give hours.
Right, right. There's a lot of folks who do sign up for this program and find that their placement is such a good fit at the end, when they've earned all of their hours. They continue on as a volunteer and hand in a timesheet and say, these are my proxy hours.
That's great.
Or just keep going. Very generous.
Yeah, so I had a question just concerning, so 98 seniors signed up for it last year. How were they placed? I know you have a screening sheet, kind of what they're interested in or what they can do.
Yes.
And then, I guess, I will speak a little bit to perhaps what Mr. Sanders spoke to. When there is something going on in town that might require workers that could apply, how would that be, how would that mechanism work where we could?
Sure.
Field those type of employees to help?
Yes. I will definitely say that it is a challenge to place this many people with that amount of hours. What we do right now is each person who comes onto the program is a brand-new enrollee, as in brand-new participant. I meet with them, do pretty much a full-on interview. What are they interested in? What are their capabilities? And try to find a match that way. I try to, at every department head meeting, bring up that we have this program. If you have tasks that need to be done, tell me, give me something specific. And throughout the year, I do have people who say they have a mailing, or they have something going on with the trails and weed whacking, cleanup, things like that. So we do our best to place each person, and we send out periodic emails throughout the year to all of the enrollees. We have the need for a minute taker for Board of Health, we have the need for this position. And you know, there's a lot of, we find that there's sometimes a gap between the skillset or the capabilities or desires of the workers and what is actually needed in the town.
Yeah.
Because I know a lot of department heads are asking for staff and looking for additional help in their offices, but sometimes we just can't find that perfect match, but we do the best we can.
Okay. I, I like, the only thing I would add, I mean, we're, we're changing the program, I think, for the better, absolutely, for the seniors, just to make sure that, you know, we, we just talked about the park and rec getting some hours there. Let's find out what, you know, let's make it, if it has to be more of a competitive process, or find other ways to do it. We, we do it more, almost like a job interview.
So let's not confuse what Park and Rec brought before us and what Liz is bringing before us. Park and Rec literally had people that came to them, and Park and Rec is going to different folks who are doing programs currently.
Yeah.
And trying to bring in archery and English second language and Spanish and theater arts and things like that. They're trying to just build out their program by collaborating with the schools. That has nothing to do with the work-off program or anything. They're employees.
Well, it does, in one case it does. So that's why I was bringing it up with Marilyn, correct? So I think, yeah, so I just want to make sure that, you know, that's a great opportunity. So I guess if, if we're telling seniors to promote themselves into, you know, other departments, is that something that's acceptable for this program as well? Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Besides just going through the paperwork at the beginning of the year, if they've only hit 1,000 hours and they know they're not probably going to get their 1,500.
Hundred hours.
Yeah, sorry. Dollars.
Thousand hours.
It's a lot of hours. Can they speak to a department manager and maybe petition that way?
Yeah, I think in the past, before we've built up this program as much as we have, we've told people, it's your responsibility to find a placement. Go talk to department heads, go to different offices, use your connections. But we're at the point now where we're doing, I think, a really phenomenal job, getting it organized in such a way that we can be a better matchmaker.
Okay, great.
We'll see.
It seems almost like we need to have a job fair.
We'll, we'll get there, I think.
Oh, geez.
No, like, just have all the departments come in and say, this is what I need, and all the seniors come in and say, this is what I do, and talk to those, so that you're not always the middle.
Yeah, we've made some really unique connections where people come in with a skillset and we're like, wow, you know what? I never thought of that, but you'd be great here. It's, it's fun. It's a lot of work.
Thanks for this program.
All right, any other comments? If not, we're ready for a motion?
One thing.
Oh, sorry.
Sure. So we'll just have to do a cleanup warrant article in the fall, because there was an article in 2013 which capped it at $1,000, which we just want to clean that up. But Town Council feels we can proceed, and we'll get that cleaned up in time.
Great.
Do we want to include the proposed change? Is this motion as written adequate? Or do we want to include the, the expansion to $160,000 and?
This is the only thing that the Select.
It's going to facilitate itself into that.
Technically, this is the only thing the Select Board needs to do this evening.
Okay.
As far as putting a cap, that's, I think, is just a courtesy thing that Liz is bringing forward to the board.
Okay.
And, and just to mention, I did have a conversation with Mr. Sanders about this, and what he was telling me is years ago, when the program did go awry, it was George that, that brought it back. To actually, when we had a nice conversation last week, that most of what we're doing today is still as a result of Mr. Sanders's work a long time ago. So he does know the program very well, and thank you, George, as always, for your input.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Kathy Miller, Chief Assessor. I just wanted to add one thing, that it's one tax work-off program per household, but you are eligible, there are separate programs, the senior work-off and the veteran work-off. So if you were a veteran and a senior, and you meet, you meet the requirements for both work-off programs, it's one each per household, whether a single homeowner or a married homeowner. So I just wanted to put that out there, so that people knew that you could be eligible for both.
Okay. Great.
Great.
Thank you.
Good.
Yep.
Move that the Select Board vote pursuant to Master and Allow Chapter 59, Section 5K to increase the property tax abatement from $1,000 to $1,500 for the senior and veteran tax work-off programs.
Second.
Moved by Chuck and seconded by Cindy, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five to zero is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the work, guys.
Thank you, Liz.
All right. Now the exciting Year-End Transfer section of the, of the evening.
Good evening, Lieutenant Benjamin, Finance Director, to your honorable body. I'm coming forth asking you for $18,000. This is to replace the leaking water heater at the fire department. The warranty is gone. It cannot be repaired, it actually has to be replaced. I would like to move $15,000 out of tax title, and $3,000 from Town Meeting Services to the Public Building Meeting Services account in order to cover this transfer. FinCom did vote in favor of this.
Thank you.
To prove this.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board on this one?
I just, I can't understand how the warranty is going on this thing. We had the radiator going on the, on the, the brand-new tower truck, and that, that was not a warranty. Of course, the chief was still here.
Yeah, well, I'm sure it wasn't on his watch, so, but, yeah.
Well, when it failed, it was. But, I mean, it's just, it's not, it wasn't put in on his watch. It just, it, this is where a facilities director absolutely is able to keep, keep watch on our warranties and where we're at and things like that. And I just, this is asinine to me that we're replacing a brand-new water heater in a brand-new building, and to the tune of $18,000. It just, it's, I throw up a little bit my mouth every time I read this. That's awful. It's more commentary than this.
Any other comments? Ready for a motion, I guess.
I don't want to make a motion.
Someone else can make the motion.
Move that the Select Board vote pursuant to Master and Allow Chapter 44, Section 33 of 3B to approve a year-end transfer between various line items for the fiscal year 2022 budget, as recommended by the Finance Director as presented.
Second.
Moved by Chuck and seconded by Cindy, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Grudgingly passed, five to zero. The motion carries. Thank you very much.
Excellent.
And the last item is the bond acceptance notes. Mr. O'Brien, welcome.
Sorry. Have those signed? Have those signed?
These are all signed, yeah. I don't know, Chuck has done all of them.
I don't think I've done that pile.
Okay, you know, just this, no, okay. Some of them are done, half of them are done.
Good evening, Sean O'Brien, Town Treasurer. I have two debt issues before, so I think the Anthony circulated some of the materials around. The two items roll off of last year's ban that we had for water and sewer projects. The first one is a roll of the ban for around 6.2 million. That came in at 1.4575% true interest cost, and that's for, to roll up bans for sewer design and construction, the Wickham Wellfields, and the PFAS project. The next item is the bond issue, which a couple of those projects that were banned last year are, are ready to be bonded. So that's the Cedar Hill Water Tank for around 2.7 million, and the Sewer Land Acquisition that happened last year for close to $1.5 million. So those are the issues before. The bonds came in at 3.13%, so it's up significantly from where we went.
Wow.
We had the issues in November where the ban was 20 basis points, and the bond was 1.5% compared to the ban today, which is 1.5%, and the bond at 3.1. So a lot has changed in a few months, so I'm glad we locked in those bonds earlier for some of those, you know, projects, but I'd expect similar rates going, going forward for that, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there questions from the board or comments?
No comments.
And that's for the AAA rating.
I know, right? Any comments, Chuck or Mark? Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
There's two motions.
Yeah, do you want, yeah. I'm ready for the first motion.
Yeah, you presented both, so. Move that the Select Board vote to adopt the form of the vote prescribed by Bond Counsel, a copy of which is attached hereto and made part hereof, relative, I love attorneys, relative to the approval of a $6,233,500 bond anticipation note dated June 24, 2022, sold to TD Securities and maturing November 18, 2022, at 1.4575% interest for the following projects. Sewer construction, $2,473,600, placed 10/18/20, special time meeting, Article 11. Sewer design, $1.682 million, 10/29/18, special time meeting, Article 10. Wellfields, $1.088,400, placed 5/7, voted on 5/7/18, annual time meeting, Article 19. And water PFAS, $989,500, voted 10/28/19, special time meeting, Article 12.
Second.
Motion has been made by Chuck and seconded by Gary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. And off we go.
Move that the Select Board vote to adopt the form of the vote prescribed by Bond Counsel, a copy of which is attached hereto and made part hereof. Folks.
Could you, please?
And made part hereof relative to the approval of a $4,150,000 bond dated June 24, 2022, sold to Robert W. Baird &amp; Company Incorporated and maturing June 15, 2042, at 3.130946% interest for the following projects. Water tank, $2,715,000, voted 6/13/20, annual town meeting, Article 26. Sewer land, $1,435,000, voted 6/13/20, annual town meeting, Article 11.
Second.
Motion has been made by Chuck and seconded by Gary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much.
That's you there.
All right, we are on to public input. If anybody has any comments, I would invite them to come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record, and address any comments through the chair. And, yes, please.
My name is Susan Lander, 160 Harvard Road. I am currently a member of the Council on Aging and the Council on Aging appointed to the Affordable Housing Trust. I'm here tonight to, because I'm concerned about, okay. All right, I'm concerned about your appointments to the Affordable Housing Trust. The, two of the, you are appointing two positions. There are three applicants. Two of those applicants are currently members of the Planning Board. There is also a member of the Planning Board on the Affordable Housing Trust. So that would put a quorum of the Planning Board on the Affordable Housing Trust. I think you should consider the ramifications of perhaps doing that. I attended a workshop put on by the Mass Housing Partnership, excuse me, Mass Housing Partnership, and it was Affordable Housing Trust 101. And it basically suggested that that kind of a thing of having a quorum of another board on the Affordable Housing Trust was discouraged mainly because of legal ramifications, that any decisions made by the Planning Board or the Affordable Housing Trust could be challenged because of having the quorum of the Planning Board on that committee also. And the main reason I'm concerned as a citizen is that there are so many projects coming up to, in front of the town, 550 King Street and Train Station, and even perhaps this building that would have affordable housing as a component to it. Planning Board would have to be making approvals and making, taking positions on those. And I don't want our town to end up having challenges because of that, of a possible, of that possibly happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Napoli, do you want to comment on that at all?
All right.
I mean, my, my impression is that we have, we can post, if, if legally we could, if we were forced to, we could post a Planning Board meeting at the same time as the Affordable Housing Trust if there is a quorum present.
We could. I mean, I would prefer to wait till we actually go through deliberations.
That's fine.
For those appointments, but I, I do have a similar, similar mindset as to last speaker, so I'd rather wait till that point.
Are there other public input? Mr. Sanders?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Sorry. Thank you.
George Sanders, 672 Great Roy. Mr. Chairman, I've been a citizen of this town for about 25 years. 25 years. I think it's imperative that we have the agenda set out whereas you take public input where someone can make comment on stuff before you vote on it. It's not a fact of debating everything that is on there. I think we're intelligent enough to know that there are certain things that we might want to ask a question about or get an answer to it that maybe you hadn't thought about. So to me, it's imperative that the citizens of this town be able to speak to what is on the agenda and not like all the items that you have already voted on and passed already. We didn't have a chance to say anything irregardless of what was there to speak about that. Because if you want to hear what the public has to say about your agenda, you have to give us opportunity to speak on it before you vote on it. I mean, that just makes sense to me that you do that. And I don't feel that you did that with this agenda because I spoke to the town administrator before because you put it so far down the list and you vote on everything now, and then when it comes time to, well, you already done acted on it, so it's almost useless to say anything about it. I would think that you would want to know what we think as citizens in this town about what you bring up on the agenda and what you pass. That's not debate. I know what debate is. I've been around this system for years. But I appreciate what you do. Make no mistake about that. My best answer is always in the town of Littleton and the people. But if you start shortchanging the people, Georgia Arthur Sanders Sr. is going to speak up. It's just that simple. Because it's the right thing to do. You need to hear what the people have to say. And it's very important to us that you let us do that. Now, I had a question, and my question was with the parking racks, only position that you put. Because I know before this town, when Mr. Tim Gardner was the town administrator, they taken and put people that they knew within the town here and then posted. And they didn't go outside and post it. If you're equal opportunity employer, you need to post the position. So the position that she has, three, four, whatever it is, she named people off. That sort of kind of tells me that, did she put this out so that other people could bid for it and that was an equal and opportunity elimination process that she came up with for people for this position? She came in and asked for the position. Once you get the position, then you ought to then go and try to fill them, not the other way around. Get the people you want to fill them, then come in here and say vote them in or vote the positions in. So you need to make sure that we're being fair to people that are filling these positions. And I don't feel from what I heard here tonight that this is the way that the town should fill those full positions. I thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sanders. I appreciate your input, as always. Anyone else from the public have any comments? If not, we'll go to board member updates. Mr. Rombacher.
So yesterday, I attended a reception for Ann Himmelberger, who retired from the Littleton Historical Society after over 20 years. It was sad to see her go. It was very well-attended and really, really nice snacks. So thank you, Ann, for all your service. She'll be missed on the board. At our COA meeting today, also Peter Barbella presented something that he wants to, he's been trying to get a motion passed through the House to change the senior, give seniors more of a tax break on their property taxes. And I think Gary and I are probably going to be trying to work with him to form a semblance, start to form a committee going forward that I'm sure he'll be coming in front of us shortly.
Great. That's something I've worked with him for a long time.
Mr. Wilson? It's been a while since we met. You know, I had on here. So we've been on about a month mark and I, so just the last couple of weeks, you know, I attended the coffee with a cop, which is fantastic. I really appreciate, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the police showing up and answering some of the concerns, you know, especially with some of the stuff going on in Texas and how those, you know, just hearing some of the seniors talk about being scared to go to the grocery store, being scared to go to the theater, because that's the reality that people are feeling. So, so it's nice to hear the police kind of de-escalate that and talk about, a little bit about how Littleton's trains, a little bit unique, believe it or not, to the surrounding community. So very aggressive training program for things like that. So I think it did put a lot of the seniors at ease. We did the ribbon cutting, Cindy and I, for Glamorous Jane up at the, up at the Point. So that was, that was fantastic. Alex and her, her team are new to the town, so hopefully they do a wonderful business. I was able to visit, I think with, well, everybody I think but you were up at the LePoli Properties in Lawrence. I think that, that was an enlightening experience to visit and see some of the projects that he's been involved with and what he's all about and what he's, his vision is, you know, for 550 King Street. Exciting. We asked some tough questions, put a lot of, he's, he put a lot of work into, you know, answering our questions and talking to us. And he has a very unique story as well, as far as his family and origins in the country. So I wanted to thank him for that because it was, it was a very good visit, took all day, and I think we, we learned a lot from that. I wanted to congratulate Doug Wood from the VFW. He's just ended his year tenure as the State Commander for the VFW in Littleton, so he'll be back into the normal fold now. But I think that was a very, very honorable thing that he was able to do, and it helped many veterans along the way. Lastly, well, actually not last, I got two more, sorry. Just congratulate our many sports teams and graduates. I mean, that's the most recent thing that's happened over, and we're still involved, I think, in a couple of sports, but it's softball especially, I believe. So congratulations. And lastly, Liz isn't here still, is she?
She's.
She has. She didn't mention that she got Director of the Year, but.
What? Congratulations.
There is a joke behind it. She got, she showed the certificate today, the Council on Aging meeting, certificate for Director of the Year. We found out that all the directors got it. Yeah. That's great. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Napoli?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm glad, actually, that Liz is still here. One of the things that we had talked about as a board, and I just want to revisit, is inviting Nicole to come in, Liz, about the Littleton Coalition Against Addiction and all the different groups that she has spearheaded. Maybe have her come in and appear before the board just so we can get more public, raise more public awareness about all the different programs that she's running, I think that are certainly, unfortunately, very timely for families and individuals facing addiction. So I think it would be wonderful, wonderful if she could come in and share that with the board and the public. I did, as Mr. Wilson had mentioned, we attended the ribbon cutting for Glamorous Jane. It's a new aesthetics business up at the Point. It was a lot of fun. Alex and her team are wonderful, and it was just really nice to see people out and about with no masks on. And she's really excited to be in Littleton and, you know, just to be, to see a new business starting up there at the Point, I think, was really encouraging. And it was just, it was a nice group of people. So that was, that was wonderful to attend. And the only other thing I wanted to mention, too, is the whole, the 550 King Street project. I don't know if this would be a select board endeavor, or maybe Mr. Ansaldi can help with this, but I'd like to get more information about that project out onto the front page of the town website. I know that planning board members have also mentioned that. But it's just, it's so prominent now. I know we have a meeting tomorrow night relative to that project and a few other projects in town, but I think it would just be helpful if information like that was on the homepage of the town website, just so that more people can become aware of what.
Maybe we could ask Liz if she could build us a microsite like she did for the senior center.
Well, so Myron's wonderful. I know Myron's still here. She has all the information on the, on the projects page of the planning board website. I would just like to try to move that to the forefront somehow, if we could, if people think that it would be helpful. I think it would be helpful. So, and that's all.
Thank you. Last weekend, I attended Brandon Lavoy's Eagle Scout Court of Honor, where Mr. DeCoste was there, Representative Arciero. I want to thank Brandon for his service to the town. Congratulate him, congratulate him on getting Eagle Scout and wish him the best. I really hope he doesn't go away and stays in town, maybe, I don't know, living in his mom's basement so that we can continue to garner all of the wonderful things he does for the town. And the only other thing I have is, in the packet was the standard and pores rating document for the town because of the ban, and I wanted to read this one sentence. The reasons they gave us a AAA rating was, quote, "well embedded financial management policies and practices with a focus on long-term sustainability and a strong institutional framework." So I started making a list of the people to thank for doing that, and I realized it's basically pretty much everybody. And so I just want to just ask everyone to continue to be really good, and that's all. So thank you all very much for that.
Excellent.
Yeah, really. I mean, it's just, it's so amazing that we can continue to be financially healthy in this very unsettled environment. Great. So we are on, I believe, now to appointments, board appointments. Do you want to take?
Sure, I'll walk you through. So the first, first one is the Affordable Housing Trust, Trust Fund Board of Trustees. You have two appointments to make. There's three applicants. And Myron wanted to speak on this because I know Sue just brought up the planning board situation where their quorum would be present. I think Myron has some information on that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ansaldi. Myron Toole, town planner. I had heard the question before about whether or not having a quorum on the planning board as members of the Affordable Housing Trust was a good idea or not. But since there has, has been a quorum at several of the HT meetings, I've been automatically double posting it anyway. I always post a planning board meeting for the same date as Affordable Housing Trust meeting. To me, well, it's a seven-member committee. There are three openings, two to be filled by the select board and one to be filled by the town administrator appointment. There are three candidates. To me, having three planning board members interested in serving on the Affordable Housing Trust simply points out the importance of addressing the current housing crisis. Littleton, based on our goals of the master plan, can be part of the local solution for housing needs. And as I mentioned, I've been double posting the HT meetings anyway, kind of as a built-in suspenders approach to open meeting law on that.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Ms. Napoli, I know you have some comment. Oh, go ahead.
I was going to, before you began, I was ready to appoint Anna Houston for the town administrator representative, so that would remain the two people for two spots.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Napoli, I know you had, you said you had some comments.
So actually, Myron, while you're up there, so Susan, had she had spoken to some legalities that had come up at the recent Mass Housing Partnership Forum? Do you have any comments about, about that aspect of having a quorum of planning board members on the Affordable Housing Trust as well?
I'm not aware of anything outside of open meeting law question.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, if you, I, thank you, Myron. I appreciate that. So I, I mean, I personally, I, I am not in favor of having three planning board members serve on the Affordable Housing Trust. And just having observed planning board meetings where I think they've kind of transitioned over to talking about things that would fall with, under the purview of the Affordable Housing Trust, raised some concerns with me personally. I know that, you know, Anna Houston's been coming to the meetings. She has been participating in the Affordable Housing Trust meetings, and Myron has been great about posting it just because she, you know, we knew that she was going to be there, and she provided comments as a resident. But I just think as far as having three voting members on the planning board and three voting members on the Affordable Housing Trust, and, you know, to Sue's point, we have a bunch of projects coming up now where affordable housing is a component of all of them. I think there's just too much risk for overlap between the two boards. So, and it has nothing to do whatsoever, you know, personally against Anna Houston's wonderful. She's very knowledgeable. She's great. I just, I just think structurally and optically and all of it, I just don't think it's, it's a, it's a good idea. So that's just the way I feel about it.
I feel as though it's, it's just bad form to have three members of any, anybody, or a quorum of anybody at an additional, separate meeting. And it has nothing to do with who the, who the people are.
Right.
But I just, I do feel as though three members or a quorum of anybody outside of open meeting law potential violations, I think that you open yourself up to, I think Sue alluded to it, the possibility of other legal challenges that if you've got a quorum of the planning board and now it's posted, so it's, it's a planning board meeting as well now, and a decision is made that potentially a developer feels was out of bounds, we open ourselves up legally as well to our planning board, as well as to the Affordable Housing Trust. So I think that, I don't think it's good form for us to appoint three members of the planning board to, or three members of any board to any other board. So I would, I would recommend against all of us, and I'd actually ask the town administrator to hold off on his appointment until we kind of figure out how we want to act on whether or not we appoint.
So, sorry, can we, can you just clarify for me? So there are two open seats at this time?
Two open seats, two open seats for the board to appoint and one spot for the town administrator.
And you haven't appointed yours yet.
No, but I did talk to Anna today, and I didn't know the feeling of the board. So if that's how you feel, I would just ask you to table this till next meeting when we continue the appointments. So then Anna could have an opportunity to come here and then.
She's here.
Oh. Sorry, I didn't see you back there. It might be still a good opportunity to just table this and address it.
I think it is a good idea to table it because I do think that Mark's currently sitting. Bartlet's term is up.
Yeah.
Yes, correct.
He reapplied.
But he reapplied, and Anna has applied for.
Yeah, and then we have Angus Michaels, who's been on the board, and he's also reapplied.
Right.
The other question, and this kind of leads into what Mr. Sanders touched on earlier, is where was this position advertised? Where do we usually advertise for the board?
We advertise it in the newspaper. We advertise it on the website.
Okay.
All this, just the regular places?
Just the openings, the postings, the openings on, yeah, through HR, I think, on our website where.
Right.
Okay.
I have no problem with postponing this for a couple of weeks, but I am curious how, how are we, how are we going to discuss and/or address this issue in the, in the intervening two weeks? Like, what, what are we going to do outside of meeting?
Right.
Right, in order to try to fix this? Or, you know, satisfy?
I'm prepared to make a motion that we don't, we flat out do not appoint, do not have two members.
Three.
Three members. Well, right now.
You're looking at a potential.
Yeah, we do not, we do not, we want to move forward tonight. We're going to be made, we're going to be forced to make a decision between two of the planning board members. I'm going to have to re-advertise to get another person.
No, actually, because, because all, because the town administrator appointee is, would be the third. So we could, we could vote the two select board appointees in tonight and leave the, you know, I don't know if that's fair to Anna or Bartlet, but.
The Affordable Housing Trust was set up by this board, right? So we could, we could make that change, that there will be no quorum, basically handcuffs Anthony, if we.
Yeah, we could.
I think it's by statute. Change at this meeting because you didn't.
It wasn't posted as such.
Yeah. The Affordable Housing Trust was set up by statute.
Right.
Through town meeting?
Yeah.
So we'd have to go to town.
So the board brought, right, when Keith was here, Keith brought it forward through the select board, and it was exactly, it's a statutory board.
Okay. So, so again, I'm happy to delay it, but like, what are we going to do and what are we going to change in the next two weeks?
I mean, I'm looking at it as, you know, the, if it's legal to do, that's one thing. We can sit here and say some of the pitfalls, it might happen. I mean, this is, and it's not an appointed board. That's an appointed board, but there, that planning board's obviously an elected board. So I know we would never put three of us on a board, but I just kind of look at it as, they're volunteering to do this, right? But I understand what the potential pitfalls of it. I just don't know if we want to look at it from that perspective and not appoint. But if it's, if it's legally sound, then I want to leave that out.
I would ask that you take into consideration the Mass Housing Partnership, the authority on such matters has advised strongly against it.
Town council will be here next, next meeting, as we have some, so it might be, perhaps we could just pose the question to him. It has been posed to him before, and his biggest concern was always the open meeting law, but we could ask him to dig deeper.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I'd like to research it more. Planning board specific, is it, is it a strength to have, you know, more members from that, on that board, too? I just don't know enough about it. I don't know.
And I wasn't aware of the guidance from, from the housing. So, so, okay, let's, let's talk.
Planning board specific, is it, is it a strength to have, you know, more members from that, on that board, too? I just don't know enough about it. I don't know.
And I wasn't aware of the guidance from, from the housing. So, so, okay, let's, let's table this until next meeting. We all, I can do a little bit of research on that guidance. You can look into, we can talk to town council next time. Okay, thank you. Thank you all. What do we have next? Clean Lakes?
Clean Lakes Committee. So you have four annual reappointments to consider for Clean Lakes, all expiring June 30th, 2025. Mill Pond member, Long Lake alternate, and two citizen at lodge.
Are any of the applicants here, and do any of them wish to speak? If not, I feel like we could probably go straight to the motion. Or is there any board debate about this one? Mr. Clerk, when you're ready?
Just fill in the blanks.
Fill in the blanks there.
I'm going to be the names, Chuck, when you read the motion?
Yeah, if you want to do that. All right. Move the select board vote to appoint Timothy Wanzer as a Mill Pond member for a three-year term on Clean Lakes Committee expiring June 30th, 2025.
So, sorry, is this individual motions or is it all one motion?
It's three, three individual motions to set up.
Okay.
Second.
Motion has been made by Chuck and seconded by Cindy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes five to zero. Thank you.
Move that the select board vote to appoint Kami Bean as a Long Lake alternate for three-year term on the Clean Lakes Committee expiring June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Motion has been made by Chuck and seconded by Cindy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes five to zero. Thank you.
Move the select board vote to appoint Lisa Winter and Edward Collins as citizens at large for three-year terms on the Clean Lakes Committee expiring June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Motion has been made by Chuck and seconded by Cindy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, up next is the Community Preservation Committee. You have one annual appointment to make tonight to consider, and there's one applicant. This term expires June 30th, 2025. There's one applicant, Timothy Wanzer, 39 Mill Road.
Is Mr. Wanzer here? And if so, would you like to address the board? If not, if there's, oh, Ms. Corry?
Do you just read my number?
Thank you very much. All those Clean Lakes people watching at home, I know that you're glued to your set. You got to be sworn in by the clerk immediately.
Even if it's a reappointment.
Even, even, even people who are reappointed. Thank you.
I did have a question. When we're appointing, for instance, to the CPC, do we, is it common for us to ask if there's any members of CPC that want to speak about the individual potentially?
Yeah, I mean, we usually ask for any comments about, you know.
Usually there's a recommendation in our packet if they submitted one.
Okay.
Right, there was none because there's one applicant in one position.
Right, okay.
So are there any comments on this motion?
I have just a general question on this. Why are some of the terms limited and some of them unlimited on the CPC?
Maybe just the way the.
If you look in the packet, some of these say they're unlimited terms.
No expiration date ones, yeah.
Some of them are represented from other committees, so that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So someone that's.
Annually, they would change up as the committee formation changed up.
Okay.
Oh, like, so the appointment from conservation and.
Right, could be changed from the, just like you did a couple of meetings ago for various boards and committees.
Okay, thank you.
But you're right, it's not consistent. The planning board appointee has a term, the Parks and Rec one doesn't, so it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. But anyway, we're not going to fix that tonight. Okay, Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, we're cleaning that up on the website.
Move that the select board vote to appoint Timothy Wanzer as citizen at large for a three-year term on the Committee, Community Preservation Committee, expiring June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Setting up for failure.
Motion is made by Chuck, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much. Council on Aging is next. Three applicants.
Right. There's three appointments for you to consider, all expiring June 30th, 25. Gene Sill, Joe Knox, and Susan Malander.
Oh, I know that two of, three of those are here.
There's members of the board, too.
Would anybody like to speak to the, would you like to speak? Anybody?
We said we would defer to the chair.
Would you like to speak? Okay.
I watched, so I know it's got to get moved. Okay. Marge Payne, Chair of the Council on Aging Board. We had our monthly meeting this afternoon at 3:00. And I'm happy to let you know that the board highly recommends Joseph Knox, Susan Malander, and Gene Sill to be appointed. Susan is a reappointment, and she's done a wonderful job, and she wants to continue, and we agree she should continue. So the, our, the votes were, we had two board members who abstained because they felt that they really shouldn't vote for the COA.
What are you doing?
It was an awkward situation, so.
We talked about this.
We did. We discussed it at great length so that we wouldn't be violating any laws in either meeting. And it was, so we had seven yeses and two people that abstained. And all of the votes, the vote was the same for all, so that's the board's recommendation.
Thank you very much.
And two, you're right, two of the three members are here if they'd like to speak. I'm sure they would, you'd like to hear from them.
All three of them are. All three.
Gene's all set.
Okay. If there's no comments, any comments from the board? You want to speak, Mr. Knox? Oh, please, yeah, I invited you up earlier.
I'm new to the town, and I thought this week, I said, hopefully, I'll get to know people.
I don't think you're old enough to be on the COA.
No, I just wanted, after leaving the board, I took time, time off to consider what I was going to do. I had a very nice conversation with Marjorie about this, and I considered, I still want to serve the town in some capacity, so I want to take this opportunity to, need to serve the town and work with the Council on Aging.
Awesome. Thank you. I mean, everyone who volunteers their time has my eternal gratitude. So I, we, I think we all appreciate everybody who gets involved.
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, I think we're ready for a motion. Mr. Clerk.
Move that the select board vote to appoint Joseph Knox, Susan Malander, and Gene Sill for three-year terms on the Council on Aging Board, expiring June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Motion made by Chuck and seconded by Cindy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much. Yay, everybody!
Just a reminder, everybody has to go get sworn in at the clerk's office.
I was going to say it again at the end.
Through the chair.
Cultural Council.
Mr. Chair, you have two annual appointments to make with terms expiring June 30th, 2025, and one reappointment for a term expiring June 30th, 2023. There's three applicants.
Ms. Bracken, I see you're ready to speak to us.
I am. I'm Jean Bracken, 377 King Street, the current Chair of the Cultural Council. And I'm applying for one more year rather than a three-year term. The board is doing wonderful work, and you're going to start seeing more. Of course, we've been doing grants through the cycles for years, music programs, art programs, all sorts of stuff like that. But we want to do a little more public art. So all I can just say is keep an eye on Cloverdale.
Teaser.
That's the first, that's the first one. It's going to be spectacular. And also, the labyrinth at the castle and the trees is one of our projects that's been backed by a lot of folks in town. The Rock Committee, and I don't know who else, and Cattell does, has been very generous and so forth. So we can have up to 20-some members on the board, and if we can get more members, we're always trying. And if we can get more members, we can do more fun stuff. And people will drive by Littleton and go, wow, that looks like a cool place.
Thank you.
I've seen, Ray Nash is currently on the Committee and is a wonderful guy. And I don't know Stephanie, but I've seen her. Oh, good. I've seen your background, and I thought, yay, you know. So we're very happy to have her join us and.
Vote for us. Okay. Would you like to just say a few words? Introduce yourself and say hello?
You're here.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Georgopoulos. We are new to Littleton.
And where, can you just state your address for the record?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, 37 Shaker Lane.
Thank you.
We are new residents to Littleton. I have professionally and just career-driven been in the arts for my entire life, pretty much, and just believe in community arts. I love the idea of supporting the community, of bringing more. I believe in public art, and I'm just really excited to work with Jean and her team and see what else could be done in Littleton to enhance that, so.
Thank, thank you very much for volunteering. Any comments from the board? Nope. Okay.
He's not here. Move that the select board vote to appoint Stephanie Georgopoulos and Ray Nash for a three-year term on the Cultural Council, expiring June 30th, 2025, and Jean Bracken for a one-year term on the Cultural Council, expiring June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five to zero. Please go get sworn in to the clerk's office.
Thank you.
Clerk's office on the second floor of this building.
Thank you very much.
The next, the next one is the Disability Commission. The select board has two annual appointments to make, with terms expiring June 30th, 2025. And you have two appointments, and Diane Crory is the elected position.
Hi. Would you like to speak, Ms. Corry?
Diane Crory, 74 King Street. So we haven't met in quite a while, but we plan on meeting by the end of the month. And one of the things that we are really working on is we'd like to do what's called a look at Littleton and what is needed. We, several of us did a five-hour Zoom the other day, and we have another five-hour Zoom, which is on Wednesday, and it is to get certified. And it was very intense, to say the least, and it is to get certified for all of disabilities. And we'll find out if we actually know what we're talking about after we get done. But it's, it was very interesting, and we learned, well, I learned a lot. I don't know if Louis learned, learned a lot or not. I'm not sure. George, were you on the other night? Yeah, okay. But it, it talks a lot about what we're, we're lacking in Littleton and what we need to get up to speed. And so by the time we get done with the next five hours, we'll be able to bring it forward. So I'm looking forward to doing another three years.
Just one quick question. Who swears you in?
For the assistant.
Okay.
So just, don't come tomorrow because I'll be working remotely tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting up the time to do that certification.
That's amazing.
I did have a question. I'm a member on this commission, so I just didn't know if I, am I eligible to vote as well?
I don't know. Are you a representative?
I'm not a, I'm a family member representative.
I think you can.
I see no conflict.
Okay, I should be looking at you.
Any other comments?
What, Chuck?
The old guy. Joe's not here, so he's in the back, maybe.
I guess we're ready for a motion.
Okay. Move that the select board vote to appoint Eric Manzer and Diane Crory for a three-year term with the Disability Committee, expiring June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, next up is the Finance Committee. You have one annual appointment to make for a term expiring June 30th, 2023. And you have two applicants. Both are here this evening.
Mr. Tarbox.
Brian Tarbox, 16 Fletcher Lane. Fred and I are friends. We worked on the Finance Committee together four or five years. We were actually on the Committee when the town got that AAA board rating. I have the greatest respect for Fred, and I'd love to stand for the next time you have an opening, but I'm not going to run against Fred, so I'd like to withdraw and just in favor of Fred. He's a, you know.
Thank you.
I don't want to run against.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next time? I know that you won't, I know that you won't miss the, the next opening, so.
Sure.
I'm sure we'll see you again. Thank you very much, Brian. Mr. Faulkner, do you want to speak? No, all set? Any comments from the board? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Can we do it right in?
Why do you confuse things like this? Come on.
I just want to keep Fred honest.
You know what? You're trying to derail this so I don't end the meeting on time.
I move that the select board vote to appoint Fred Faulkner for a one-year term on the Finance Committee, expiring June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Motion made by Chuck and seconded by Cindy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Yay, yeah.
Next up, Mr. Chair, is the Permanent Municipal Building Committee. You have one annual appointment to consider for a term expiring June 30th, 2027, and that applicant is Robert Romilly.
Is Mr. Romilly here? Nope, all right. Any comments from the board, then?
I've served with Mr. Romilly, and he does an excellent job, and he's good, nothing but more knowledgeable being on the PMBC.
Great. All right, so ready for a motion.
Move the select board vote to appoint Robert Romilly for a five-year term on the Permanent Municipal Building Committee, expiring June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much.
Next up, Mr. Chair, is the Zoning Board of Appeals. The select board has three regular and one alternate annual appointment to consider for the Zoning Board of Appeals, for terms expiring June 30th, 2025. There's three applicants.
Great. Are the, if applicants are here, does anyone want to speak? Ms. Gould? Nope? We'll start with Ms. Gould.
Current Chair.
Hi.
Hi.
Cheryl Gould, Chairman, Zoning Board of Appeals, currently. I'm up for renewal, and I would like to serve again, and I certainly enjoyed my time on the board. Rod Stewart is also up for renewal. He's not here today. We just love all of our members, and they all make huge contributions. They all come from different experiential backgrounds, and it's always helpful.
Great.
John Field is up for renewal for an alternate position, but Mark Sossier, who is a permanent member, has tendered a resignation, I think, this week. So I'd love to see John reappointed as well. His contribution is immense. He's a building inspector in another community, so it's great to acknowledge.
So are we saying we're going to do three regular appointments then and not an alternate?
Yes.
Is that what you meant by that, Jean? I did not know.
Is John willing to?
Want to speak?
Make it short.
Take your time, John.
Just say whatever you want.
I got money on this.
No.
Not long-winded. I've enjoyed my time serving, and I look forward to serving some more.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to take a full?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board?
Exactly.
All right. In that case, let's do a motion for three full regular board members.
Move the select board vote to appoint Cheryl Gould, Rod Stewart, and John Field for three-year terms as regular members for the Zoning Board of Appeals expiring June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Please get sworn in. You.
Wednesday.
Not tomorrow, right. Not tomorrow. Okay.
Mr. Chair, the last one for this evening for appointments is actually the creation of the Shakelane Building Committee. Steve, Mark, myself, Superintendent Clancy met with Town Council and discussed what the makeup should be, and it was based on, I think the law school was?
Russell Street.
The Russell Street?
Russell Street, right. And this is a similar makeup to that committee. So the board would need to form the committee tonight, and then we'll report back at a future meeting once the members from the various committees are appointed, selected amongst their committees to sit on this.
Okay.
And then the only thing the board can do is appoint somebody tonight, if you want, one of the five of you to sit on this as well.
Okay. Comments from the board?
As constructed, it looks like it meets pretty much the same. I was the representative of the School Committee on the Russell Street School Building Project, and it looks like it meets the same criteria. I think that the superintendent sat, and Mr. Mark was there as an ad hoc member. And so there was a lot of that, where there was other folks present, but as far as voting, this was, this looks like the same structure I think we had for the voting.
Any other comments? Okay. I guess, yeah, a motion is fine for the creation of the committee?
Move that the select board vote to establish a nine-member Shakelane Building Committee to be comprised of a member of the select board, a member of the School Committee, a member of the Finance Committee, three members of the Permanent Municipal Building Committee, Town Administrator or Designee, Superintendent of Schools or Designee, Principal of Shakelane Elementary School or their Designee.
Second.
Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, sorry.
One quick question. If, does, how many members are on the PMBC? Isn't that all the same problem we had with?
Seven, right?
They have a seven number board, yeah.
That was what I was asking.
Four, three isn't a quorum of seven.
I'm not following the question, Mark.
Is it a quorum of the PMBC?
Good question.
Let's go to the website.
Yeah, hold on.
Okay.
It says seven.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Does it say seven?
Yeah, on your, on the, on the one we just appointed, it said seven, so, okay.
Okay.
Good question.
Thank you. So the motion was made by Chuck.
And I seconded it.
Seconded by Cindy.
Yep.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
So if you want to make your appointment.
Do we want to appoint tonight?
I'd be interested if people, if others, just like I said.
Move the select board to appoint Chuck DeCoste.
Wow.
You want to deliberate this, Wilson?
Second. Okay, it's fine with me. It's fine with me. That's fine. All right. So the motion was made by Gary and seconded by Mark. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Should I go to the podium?
Aye. Just get sworn in, will you? Motion carries five to zero. Chuck DeCoste is the select board member. Where, what? Second floor, but not tomorrow.
Where do you want to go?
All right. Thank you all. That was great.
It was smooth.
I did want to say one thing about, out of all the applications and the resumes, I think Mr. Faulkner has had the best, he's currently employed, retired. His employer is his wife's honey, honey-do list. That was fantastic.
Thank you. And thank you all for volunteering. Thank you all for volunteering.
I say thank you to everybody that applied, and we weren't put in a position where we had to eliminate somebody, which is always.
Need the volunteers.
Employee evaluations is the next item. Town Administrator, Police Chief, and Fire Chief. So the board needs to perform the annual evaluations. I believe we need to do it before the end of this month. Is that correct, Anthony?
That is correct.
Okay. So I think there are a couple of things to talk about. One is the process, which we've done in the past. We can continue to do that. Or however, I believe one of our select board goals was to make sure that all three of these employees got the same review process. And so if tonight, the desire, you know, the desire of the board is just to discuss the immediate, short-term, you know, this year's reviews, I'm fine with that. But I do think there's another conversation to be had. So I'm open to suggestions about what, how we tackle this. And if, if, if no one has strong opinions, we can simply assign two of us to work with the Police Chief and two to the Fire Chief.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
So the form that's in the packet, the evaluation form number two, that's a form we've historically used. I personally like the form. I think we should stick with that form going forward, just because, especially with certain positions, there's a look back, you know, that's based on that form. So I, no desire to change the form. As far as the process goes, I thought, you know, for Mr. Anzaldi's review, the aggregate that we all did, we all had our input, and then it was put into one document, I thought, worked really well. I'd love to utilize something like that for the Fire Chief and the Police Chief going forward. Not necessarily.
Can't be this year.
This year. But maybe just look at that process for next year, I think would be good. But that's just my opinion.
I agree. I mean, and one of my goals was to basically formalize that process and bring it to you all.
I think we had consensus at our, at a retreat that that was, that was kind of the way that would go as well.
I think having two members do the, setting the standards for the upcoming year makes sense, that we don't, we don't have a quorum doing that. But the board doing an aggregate to review whether that was met at the end of the year. Does that make, you know what I mean? So we're all reviewing the performance at the end of the year, but kind of, we, it probably makes more sense to break it up for setting the goals and standards for the coming year by assigning it like you have in the past.
Yes, except that I don't want it to be, you know, we, I want everyone on the board should have input on those goals. Like, I agree that maybe it makes more sense for two people to write them, but I do believe that there should be input from everyone if they wish to have it.
Okay. I mean, I was just envisioning my head, five of us being in front. I don't know if, it doesn't have to be that way.
So I think what we kind of agreed upon was, for right now, for the year that just passed, for, to evaluate, let's say, Mark and I do the Police Chief. Two of us will sit down and evaluate based upon what the Police Chief got last year. You and Cindy do the Fire Chief. You base, you know, it's going to be for two months' worth of evaluation, but it's, and then from that, we come back, and that evaluation is done, and now we move forward with the process that Cindy just brought forward and said, with the aggregate, where we all have input on setting the goals. And that way, when we do this next year, by the end of June, those goals were goals that we collectively compiled, and then we do the aggregate based upon the performance toward those goals.
Okay. So now, I think Cindy was saying something slightly different, which was that two of us create the goals, or Gary was saying, two of us create the goals and all of us review the goals. Is that?
I'll do it either way. I just didn't know.
But what you were saying.
Oh, I was just talking about the aggregate.
Oh, okay.
So just using Anthony's review as an example, all five members, you know, they filled out these forms, and based on the information in these forms, came up with the aggregate.
Right.
For this year, for the Police Chief and the Fire Chief, I mean, you know, two members, like the example Chuck just gave, you know, Mark and Chuck for Police, and then Gary and myself for Fire. Using this form, format, but then for next year, what I would envision across the board for Town Administrator, Police, and Fire is that all five members fill out the form.
But what we have to do is we have to establish what those goals are so that we're able to do that form next year.
That's right.
We have to, so I think, I think it might be a good idea, we're kind of creating this on the fly right now.
Yeah.
So if, again, if Mark and I are doing the Police, we do the evaluation, and we base those goals based upon that conversation with the Police Chief, and based upon our evaluation, and then we bring it to the full board, and we say, hey, this is, this is what we came up with for goals.
Yeah, which we.
Any input?
Yeah.
And we can tweak it.
Yeah.
And that's what we present back to the.
I agree.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too. I just want to make sure everyone's on.
Okay.
Now, and I know at the retreat, you were stating, you were, I think you were saying that that was how you would have preferred it to go?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So I, one other question I have, though, is then, like, are we asking the Police Chief now what he wants his goals to be before we assign them? Or are we assigning them, and then, what's the interaction?
I assume it's a collaboration.
It said there was a conversation of the two, yeah, together, to set up those goals. So he has some ideas, and then we, the one thing we did talk about in our retreat, though, was getting Anthony involved. It'll be next cycle at the evaluation time where he should have.
Aggregation.
He had an aggregation. He would have a statement of input, whether it's part of the aggregation.
For the Police and the Fire Chief?
Yes, for the Police and Fire.
Well, he probably should have a say on what their goals are for the coming year as well, right?
Yeah, because it's all in support of the greater good, right?
Yeah. So I think tonight, what we can do is, let's assign two people to do the Fire Chief, two people to do the Police Chief, and let's assign two people to do Anthony's goals for this coming year, because we never created them.
Okay.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, that does.
Okay. I'm open to suggestions. I would very much like to do Anthony's goals. That's the only.
I think as the chair, you should.
Okay. And with someone else?
I think it should be.
Gary.
Either it should be the vice chair or the outgoing chair, so one of the two of us.
No, I would very much like.
Whatever.
Okay.
I'm right here.
But you said you wanted, okay. So do you seriously want to have you and Mark do the Fire Chief?
Sure.
Any objections there?
Please.
Are you interested? And would you like, you, sorry, Police Chief?
Yeah, we'll do the.
And we do the Fire? Gary, will you do the Fire with him?
Fire. Okay.
Okay.
So, yes.
So Cindy and Gary will do the Fire Chief's review.
Uh huh.
Bring the goals back to the board.
Uh huh.
You will do the Police Chief review, bring the goals back to the board.
Clearly, I'm not doing the Town Administrator's goals.
And Gary and I will do the Town Administrator's goals and bring it back to the board.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. That was a lot less painful than I thought it was going to be. All right. What's next?
The retreat was the work.
Thank you all. That was awesome.
Nagog Orchard.
Nagog Orchard, Miss Napoli.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. So.
Still an orchard?
Oh, boy.
Still an orchard.
All right.
So, as the board knows, we have formed the Nagog Hill Ad Hoc Working Group. Through that group, we came up with an RFP and a draft lease agreement, which is an addendum to that RFP. It's part of the process. The deadline for this RFP round is June 17. We had previously posted an RFP for the orchard. We had one applicant who had responded because of COVID. They had emailed in their response. They didn't follow the proper process and procedure by hand-delivering a packet to the town hall, so we couldn't count their submission, unfortunately. Just, we ran out of time. So we have reposted that RFP. The RFP is going, like I said, the deadline's June 17. So the Ad Hoc Working Group has toured the orchard. Thank you. Is Mr. Mullin gone? He was wonderful working with us and walking us through the whole property. And we did identify some areas that require the attention of the select board, which I've put together in this chart, and I broke them down. The timeframe is flexible, based on the discussion that we're going to have here tonight, with respect to immediate areas that I felt we needed to address, areas that could maybe wait until the fall, things we might want to put off till the spring of 2023, and then maybe the fall of 2023. So there's, there's certain things that have been left behind in the house and in the barn. And when I refer to the barn, I mean, the upper barn , right across the street from the house, that need to be removed. And it's a lot of stuff. Unfortunately, there's a number of mattresses and box springs, and for whatever reason, the barn is full of appliances, washers and dryers. And honestly, they might be in working order. I really don't know. So I don't, as opposed to just going in there and throwing them out, I'd like to maybe have somebody take a look at them and see if there's something that somebody could use, if they could be repurposed somehow. But we need, they need to go.
I would, I would venture to guess that if they're there, they're not working.
I, but honestly, so, I understand that, but I look at it, I'm like, how many washers and dryers could they have gone through? Because there's a lot of them in there. It just doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, how many, I, my washer and dryer's lasted 20 years. So something's up there. I just want to take a look at it and see, are they in working order? Are they not? You know, to Chuck's point, probably not, just because I'm sure mice have eaten the wires and whatnot. But I'd rather make that determination before we just toss them. But we need to do that. We need to, the house is actually really clean.
Boom swept.
They did a great job cleaning it. They honestly did. We just need to get the stuff out of there that's been left behind. So I want to just come up with a process to do that, and really just focus on the house and the upper barn as far as cleaning out those areas. The other thing I'd like to do, as well as getting a plumbing, maybe our plumber, plumbing inspector, and our electrical inspector into the house, just to take a look at it, just a high-level overview, just to see if there's any major concerns that we need to be worried about right now. And the other thing, too, is, I call it the farm stand slash gift shop. It's full of stuff. And actually, I don't know if Kathy Miller's still here, but when we toured the, when we walked the orchard, Kathy Miller was with us, and we were, like, going through the gift shop. There's some nice things in there. There, I mean, there's cute little, like, Santas and things like that, that people might be able to use. So I had put in the chart that maybe, you know, EHS or Park and Rec could go in there, and just see if there's something that could be repurposed to somebody as opposed to throwing those things away.
So I got, actually, what timing. I got a call today from Charles Auger's daughter, and she said, there's still a couple of items and so forth in the barn that they weren't able to get. And, you know, I explained to them that we had a deadline. It was two weeks after May 11.
Right.
That time has come and passed. We thought, I'll get back to you later in the week.
Unless it's an appliance.
Unless if it's an appliance, you can come and take all the.
Or one of the Santas.
Or a mattress.
One of the Santas.
Or one of the Santas.
So I don't know how the board feels. Personally, I think we're done with this. I would like to see us just, you know.
Turn the page.
You had, you had your opportunity. There's things that were taken that, quite honestly, were there before he was even there.
Belonged to the town.
Right. So I'd like to deny her request, if the board feels comfortable with that. But if you want her to go back in, I'm certainly, it's up to you.
I feel like them going back in is opening a can of worms, and every time we have some interaction with him, something, we lose something. So I would, I would vote no on that.
Well, I don't think the property was vacated. You're talking about leaving all these appliances. I don't think it was vacated properly, so.
Yeah.
That, that alone, to me, is why.
We're going to have to spend a ton of money to fit, to clean up this mess.
Plus, they're still looking to try to sell that, the farm stand, the old.
The, the, the barn, the little shed out.
The mobile thing he wants to move.
Yeah. The Redstone shed extension.
So at this point.
No.
Personally, I think if you, board's okay with me doing it, I'll gladly tell her. She would like to possibly come in a meeting and public comment.
I don't even think you have to go there, Anthony.
No, she, she had asked, so.
It's an open meeting.
Right. I explained that to her, but I don't know how you feel, but I talked to Tom and Town Council, and he's, feels moving forward.
Yeah. So.
I agree.
For that.
We're on safe ground there, I think.
Right. So thank you for that. One of the things that we did do when we went through the walkthrough was a gentleman that worked at the orchard for years came, and he had identified these really unique things that used to be there, that would have been really nice for the town to have, because.
Sign of verse.
Yeah, that are gone. So, so that being said, I am not in favor whatsoever of, and I'm glad that, clearly, it's our decision, our topic, but.
Yeah, there was just the two trailers in the back, which.
The refrigerator trailer.
Yeah, which Ed has tried to work with the gentleman to get.
Tomorrow, I think.
I think it's without, it's happening tomorrow morning, yes. But that was already predetermined a while ago, so that's the last thing that should be leaving the grounds.
Okay. Yeah, so let me, if I can.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Through the chart. And so, yeah, so if, I don't know what the board wants to recommend. I would love to see maybe Liz and Alicia go into the gift shop with Anthony, just to see if there's anything that can be repurposed or reused, or maybe.
Let me just jump in right there.
Yeah.
So the Historical Society or Commission has their yard sale. They just had it, I think, a few weeks ago. Baptist Church has one. I think some of the different organizations have, like, a flea market yard sale type thing.
Right.
If, if, after Alicia and Liz go through, and there's still stuff.
Right.
Maybe, maybe there's some keeper of the goods.
I just don't want to throw away things that people could use, or that, like, maybe we could sell those things. I don't know if we can do that, and donate the money. I don't know. But I just, maybe just get somebody in there to take a look at it. It's a great suggestion, Chuck, because they do have those yard sales. That would be wonderful. So that's the farm stand and the gift shop. There is some mildew in the basement of the house that needs to be mitigated, and I'd like to have that addressed sooner rather than later. I've got a typo, rampor, handicap rampor roof. I don't know what I wrote. The handicap, I don't even know what I wrote. The handicap ramp needs to be removed.
Oh, they actually wanted to do that, too. So if you want to allow them to do that, they wanted to come and take apart that handicap ramp.
I know, but then are we opening the?
No, I would, I, no.
Then they get hurt on our property.
Yeah.
Right, no, I, yeah.
Just being facetious. Just being facetious.
So, yeah, so the handicap ramp needs to go, and then the, oh, yeah, it's a typo, so we'll get rid of that. Um, and then the partial roof, roof repair in the gutters, um, Mr. Mullin's already identified that that needs to be done, that, but that's not something that we need to do right away, maybe before the winter comes. Um, and then the lower barn, which I call the lower barn, it's as you go down Nagog Hill Road on the left, that white.
Closest to the road.
Beautiful structure.
Oh, my gosh.
But it is chock full of things. And I think some of the things would be really useful. There's actually really, there's old maps and old things like that in there, um, and I think there's things that could be used for the next lessee, maybe, um, but then there's just a bunch of stuff that just needs to go, and it's, it's, that's going to be a huge undertaking. And one of the things I had put in my presentation was, um, DPW was talking about they don't have enough space to store equipment. If that barn ever got cleared out, it certainly could be accommodate DPW equipment. Um, I looked at other leases, um, for other orchards and agricultural properties where they've actually come up with an agreement that the town can use some of the structures on the property, but that's something that we would have to work out through a negotiation with the new lessee. Um, and then there's a tiny little cottage beyond the white barn. Um, it just has some minor things in there that need to go. There's no running water or anything in that cottage. Um, and then I call it the outer lower barn. That's the barn that you go when you walk through the woods. Um, it's closer to the water. There's tractors and things in there that need to go, um, but we really need to, in the long term, look at just taking that building down, because eventually it's just going to rot and it's just going to collapse, and it's not used to anyone. So that's why I wanted to just come up with this and talk to the board about areas that I'd like us to start working on now, in anticipation of us getting, um, a few applicants back in response to the RFP and moving forward with a new lease agreement. I just think that there's areas that we need to take care of, um, before somebody else moves into that property.
So there's a lot of items here that are, collect trash and throw it away.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure we could, well, I don't know if that's the case. We could probably get DPW to haul a dumpster, right, with their, with their truck.
Right.
But I wonder if some of the, some of the cleaning out of the barns might be part of the agreement with the leasing, like not, you know, in, in, as a part, just, yeah, part of the agreement, like, is some of the work that they need to do for the maintenance is to remove the items from the barn.
Right.
So that we, yeah, I mean, it was, I understand it's not.
Right. So that's something that, going through the whole process of working through the RFP, creating the RFP and the lease agreement, um, and we can invite town council and to talk more about that, but Jenny Merrill really said, she goes, we need to get this property in the best condition that we can before anybody moves into there. We need to really define what is ours, what was left there, what is going to go, what's going to be removed. Um, and she said it's really not, you know, the lessee's responsibility in some respects to clean all that stuff out. That's our stuff.
Yeah.
Um, you know, saying there might be some things that are usable, things that the town wants to retain, but, so we have to define those boundaries, um, and, you know, and take care of those things, but in the short term, I'd like to focus on the house and the barn in that respect. The white barn, the lower barn, we can just kind of put that to the back burner for now, because it's going to be such a big process.
Can we talk to Steve, Anthony? Could we, like, you know, talk to Steve about what DPW could do and, you know?
We can do that.
I hate volunteering them to do work, you know?
Yeah, we, we can take this list that Cindy shared with us and have a meeting and report back and what we can do and.
I mean, it's town property, so.
I know, I just, I mean, they're so inundated nowadays anyways.
But I'll say, I mean, the stuff that's in the house certainly needs to be.
Right.
The stuff that's in the, the active barn, like the working barn.
Yeah.
We talk about right across the street, that needs to be emptied to the best of our ability, and I, I think that should be our focus. We shouldn't be worrying about getting another dumpster down below and getting all that stuff cleared out.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, it should, and it's locked up, it's secured, we don't have to, you know, worry about that, but I think we need to focus on the, those two, the active part of the orchard, because there's, there's other outbuildings up on, uh, Field Four and Five, up on the top of the hill, that look out over the AT&T tower as well, that, that, you know, the, um.
Yeah, that's why, so those, the, that's why there's the immediate, and then the fall of '22 and the fall of '23. So, yeah, I, I would like to just focus on the immediate areas, um, that I just outlined.
So what's the next, so what's the immediate next step?
Well, I mean, honestly, I, I would like the board to go take a look, maybe even at the barn. Um, there just might be things in there that can be repurposed. Someone mentioned that there might be like a flat screen TV in there that a, a new lessee could maybe use, or somebody could use, so I just, um, and I really, I don't know who we could get to take a look at the appliances. I just would like to know if any of them are any good.
If we're having an RFP, it's ending this week, and we, we get a lessee, it's, it's not a bad idea to wa, if, if we choose one, not a bad idea to walk through with them and ask them.
Yeah, that's true.
What they would want and what they would want to get rid of.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
You know, at that time.
Might save us some, it's just a lot of stuff. Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
But I mean, in terms of, like, there's things we know we have to throw away.
Yeah.
So like, can we start with?
The mattresses need to go.
Right, can we start with a dumpster?
I mean, the house, we should just clean it out and make it totally empty, those tables and just little side tables and things.
Okay.
I think we should fo, maybe focus on just getting the house totally cleaned out.
Okay.
Get the handicap ramp taken down.
The ma, the mattresses and that stuff.
Yeah, and so the house is fine, with the exception of having the plumbing and electrical inspectors look at the systems and look at that mildew in the basement.
Okay.
Um, and then to Gary's point, maybe once we get a new lessee, a potential new lessee, then we can walk through the upper barn with them and see if there's anything that they might want to utilize, and we can figure all that out.
That would be, that would be part of the contract, and say, we, we will remove this before you.
Yeah. What do you think of that, Anthony?
Yeah, that's a good idea. I can report back, and just on the other, on the grass cutting.
Oh, right.
So, um, it's, it's more of a challenge than we thought. You know, we had a lot of people sign up, but then once the brother bring him in for an interview, nobody ends up showing. I don't know, they, is that part of the requirement for unemployment, that you just have to kind of solicit? I don't know, but, um, we're still looking. Tim did bring his crew from the beach there to do around the house, uh, to at least make that. Yeah, they did a nice job, and they were going around the barn, so they're trying to, in between the beach and so forth, to go there, but, um, hopefully the tractor will be in this week, and we'll have some, you know, we're just looking for a crew of four, so.
And the tractor's going to be able to manage that? I mean, that grass, it's, it's a hayfield now.
Yeah, I know, it's, 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 it's equipment that, um, Steve Yonley would use in that situation.
Right, but it, it needs to be somebody that can operate that.
Yeah, it finally looks abandoned. I mean, it looks, it looks like an abandoned orchard now.
Yeah, it does, it's, it's.
It's not like pushing a lawnmower in your backyard.
No.
So, okay.
So we'll have more.
You think the equipment we're getting, if we get someone to man that equipment, will be able to cut?
Through the field? Oh, yeah, absolutely.
That's what we're.
I was going, I was sitting there thinking, you know, put an RFP out to local farmers and let, again, they can get up there with their hares, you know?
So you're gonna.
That's fruit on the bottom, so I don't know how that affects hay operation.
Yeah.
So you're, but you're gonna, you're gonna look at, look into a dumpster, figure out.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get together, I'll get the team together, we'll review this, see what we can do, and we'll report back, um, on what we can do and what we can't do.
And when can we get out there, I guess?
Whenever you want to schedule a meeting.
I, I mean, it shouldn't, we could just do it an hour before meeting and go, if you wanted to. Sorry, Chuck.
Where are we at with, um, are there still trimmings in the rows?
Um, there's, further down, in the middle of the rows, there's still trimmings.
That was the crew, we were hoping the crew was going to be able to take care of that too, Chuck.
Yeah, the ones closer to the roadway did get cleared.
Right.
In some respect.
My concern is we're spending thousands of dollars on a brand new tractor, and we're going to be running over trimmings.
Well, they're pretty big, no, I, I told, well, we weren't hoping.
The grass is pretty tall.
Well, that's the problem. Yeah, at this point, I know, so.
Maybe we should have left Charles in there for a couple more months.
No, no, no.
He was going out and mowing every day.
Um, I think we just have to tackle one thing at a time.
Yeah.
So let's, let's go forward with the dumpster and.
So my other question is relative to the trees. I mean, we're, so we weren't able to get anybody to spray in April?
No.
Correct? There's just no one that we can get to spray at all?
No. It's not in the budget.
On a contract basis.
And we actually talked to one, somebody, the gentleman that used to work at the orchard, and he said to us flat out, he goes, don't worry about it. He goes, this year, missing spraying this year.
Well, missed for a couple of years.
He said, at this point, just don't worry about it.
Well, the fruit's gonna, it's gonna happen anyway.
You know.
We prune them, so it's gonna happen.
It's gonna, it's gonna happen even without being pruned, but.
Yeah, so he just, I mean, we didn't have it in the budget to do it. We couldn't optically get somebody to do it with the proper licensing and things that we needed.
Yeah, that's interesting.
So we just couldn't have it happen, but when, in speaking with him, he said to us that that wasn't catastrophic, that we couldn't, we couldn't spray this year. So the, the issue is going to be, um, going, you know, I don't, how many respondents have we had to the RFP?
One.
One. So according to our former Assistant Town Administrator, Joe Leighton, he would, said to me, he goes, they, they usually submit last minute, so the deadline is the 17th, so I'm not going to worry about that. If we don't end up with a viable respondent to the RFP, and we don't have a potential lessee, then that's when we're gonna, as a board, that's when the working group's going to have to stay on board, and we're going to have to come up with a timeline of what we're going to need to do, um, going forward, as far as, you know, clearing those fields and, um, spraying pesticides and things like that.
And I guess we will address that after the 17th, right?
Hopefully, we won't get to that point. Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Um, so that's where we're at.
Okay.
So we haven't got a very good landlord, huh?
For the site meeting?
Yeah.
Do you want to set a date now for the?
Sure.
To walk it?
Yeah, I think it might give us some more ideas too, I.
Right.
Um, our next meeting is the 27th, I believe?
We're gonna have an executive session out that night, so we're gonna be tied up from 5:30 on.
So we could do the week at, the meeting after that?
July 11th?
Uh, I'm not here, I'm on vacation.
Okay.
Not that you need me.
That's true. As long as I can add.
I mean, we could just go.
Yeah, I could have.
Why don't we just schedule like Friday at eight or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that too, yeah.
Just, um, we could do that, Ed has all the keys and, you know.
So we can ask him what his availability is.
Do you want to follow up with Ed and find out?
I'll follow up with Ed and we'll figure that out.
And then we can, we can schedule over email?
Yeah, because it won't take.
All right, let's do that.
Okay.
I, I have one question on this.
Oh.
When we're going to clear out things, we should call like Household Goods and see if they want to come and look around and see if there's anything, before we put everything in a dumpster, let's see if there's anything they can use.
Yeah, there was a table in the basement that they might be, you know, hutch, maybe.
Tell them to come with a truck and take whatever they want.
Okay.
Do they pick up?
I think they will, I'm not positive.
Okay.
Do they, do they need appliances?
Gary's got a truck.
I do, yeah. Good luck.
And the board's okay with me telling, that's it, they, they can't come back?
Yeah.
All right, I'll take care of that tomorrow.
I will say this, just as far as the ramp, I understand that that is something that should go, but I don't think, I don't see that as being like a number one priority for us, getting that ramp off there right now, because when you take stuff off, God knows what we have there for stairs and all, what else are we going to be, right now, we have an access point?
Well, it's just, I mean, we can leave it for now, it's not, it's not, um, it's not compliant.
It's not up to code.
It's not up to code, so it's a liability for us to have it there, so.
But not if no one's living there, so we, we can wait until we figure out a lessee and, you know, we can worry about that later.
Right.
We gotta just focus on one thing at a time.
I still want to keep that in the.
No, I, I think, you know, we're, I mean, we're talking, right now, we're just talking about the cleanup of the mess that we're in, but, I mean, I think the committee, um, should really be looking at, we want it to be better than it was before, when it was fully operational in its heyday, that's where we want to get it.
Right.
Be better than that, right?
Right.
So I, I just don't know. There's going to be quite a roadmap to get to that, so.
Right. Well, I mean, it's all going to come down to, um, the RFP respondent and the lease negotiations, is what it's going to come down to. Hopefully, we get a viable candidate or candidates to take over the orchard, so we'll see.
Um, a couple of the, are we planning on getting the electrical and plumbing inspectors in there before our next meeting, or whenever we're going to just talk about this more? And I'll plan for the mildew, right, whatever that's going to cause.
Well, I think once the plumbing inspector gets in there, they'll be able to tell us, and the electrical, they'll see it and be able to tell us what we need, we need to figure out what to do to mitigate that.
Yeah, again, let, let me meet with staff and go through this, and then we'll report back.
Figure out what we can do, yeah.
Thank you.
It'd be good to get an approximate cost for these things as we're going through them too, so we know, and not iterating every two weeks.
Right.
All right. Town Administrator update.
All right, it should be relatively quick, tip off's at half hour. So there's three items on here. The first item is to approve the amendment for designer services with LLB Architects for the center on Shattuck Street, our senior center. Looking for the board to authorize me to sign that.
Does anyone have any comments or questions about that?
No.
Let's go straight to it. Oh, sorry, Gary?
No, I, I read it. Move the Select Board vote to authorize the Town Administrator to approve and sign Amendment Three to the Agreement for Designer Services with LLB Architects for the Center on Shattuck Street, Senior Center.
Second.
A motion has been made by Chuck, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much.
With that, the second contract we need to approve is to have an owner's project manager or an OPM on with the project, and that's Vertex, so the sec, the amendment number two would be to do just that.
All right, any comments on that one?
Very important.
Move the Select Board vote to authorize the Town Administrator to approve and sign Amendment Two for Project Management Services with Vertex Companies Incorporated for the Center on Shattuck, Senior Center.
Second.
Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Thank you. All right, number three.
The last thing is, um, looking at my time, I saw that I actually have more time than I'm allowed to carry over. Um, I'd love to take more vacation time, it's just, it's a challenge, so what I'm looking for is to ask the board to allow me to carry over the time, um, or, and I talked to Matt that he brought up a question, if the board wanted to buy out, that's not something that we brought up a question, if the board wanted to buy out, that's not something that we, it's not, that we haven't done that before, we actually changed in Chief Bernard's contract, because he runs into the same thing, that we allowed him to buy out two weeks. So, whatever the board wants to do, so chooses on this.
I mean, my opinion is, like, the, the numbers are getting so goofy that I don't think you're ever going to catch up, and so if we're allowing Matt to carry over, to buy out two weeks, it seems like we could extend the same courtesy to you. If you feel like that's a number where, so that would be 80 of the 115 hours would be bought out, or some, or, or less, depending on the pleasure of the board, I'm fine with that. It really is, I think I'd like to hear from you what you would prefer first.
That's fine, you know, I do have a vacation plan for July 11th, for that week, so I will have that week, that 40 hours gone of that 30, 35, 90, 35.99 of that 40 hours gone by the second week, and that's fine, I'm happy with either one.
So, that would come off of the 115 that you've got banked right now?
Correct, so I'd only be carrying over 35.99 and then buying out the other two weeks, if that's the option the board wants to choose.
Would you consider working at the orchard for two weeks?
You know, I was thinking of taking my vacation time and just going there.
Sort of a busting holiday.
For the rest of the month, because I'm thinking cutting grass, work the tax work off, you could be like a, you could be a proxy worker. Yeah, got the Yeti, I'm all set.
We're going to insist that you're in a suit and tie, too.
It would be perfect.
We have standards, we have.
That's the perfect stress-free job, I think I'll take that.
All right, well, does, does the board have any, any comments on this?
I was a little confused with this, because it says your vacation times, 235, 236 hours, you're allowed to carry over 120, and you're asking to carry over 116. So, it doesn't, something, the math is a little funny, are you asking what's happened?
June 30th is where the problem comes in.
Right.
Yes, I understand, June 30th is, 235 hours goes down to 120, and he loses 115. Is that, or am I missing something?
That's right.
No, he's asking to carry over that 115, or a combination of buyout and carry over.
So, you're asking to carry over, not carry over 115, and an additional 115.
Carry over the 115 he would lose. Oh, yeah, the additional 100, you're right.
So, so what you're actually asking here in this motion is to carry over less than you're allowed?
No.
No, because I'll still be carrying over, it's on top of, so I'll still be carrying over the 120 hours.
But that's not what this motion says, you're asking to carry over 115.99 hours of unused vacation time.
Just unused, the other one is, I have the right to do, carry over the 120, by right.
I understand what you're saying, but you're actually asking.
How would you word it, then? I know what you're saying.
You're poorly worded.
So, how would you word it, then?
I mean.
Whatever way you want to word it, I'm good with either one.
You have to actually say, if you carry over an additional.
Sure.
Right, because.
Yeah.
Thank you, in addition to.
My, my concern here is, you know, as any employee, you know, that I've worked with or had worked for me, I, I hate to see this, because that means you didn't take your time off that you should have.
So.
It was a unique year.
So, that's what I was going to, so you get 25 vacation days in a year, and so how many vacation days did you use?
I gave five weeks.
Okay.
Twenty-five days.
Yeah. So, how many, so how many did you take?
I, I don't know that answer right now.
Well, he has, 236 hours is effectively, he took two days of vacation.
But except he carried over.
He carried over for us, so you don't.
So, you carried over from last?
I mean, the number is the number, I'm going to assume, I just.
I'm just trying to, yeah, figure it out, so that.
I'm just more concerned, like I said, about the hours, I get it this year with, with COVID and losing an ATA and.
Well, it's been everything, you know, since getting, we had the, we didn't have staff at this time last year, we were appointing Alicia and Liz and Michelle, and so it was, it was building up, building up the team, doing all those interviews, and even now through the end of the year, I'd love to take time off, but we have, I can't even, I don't have no free time in my calendar.
You're burning me out just listening to you, so.
Cindy, he hold over everything he could last year, he took three and a half weeks.
Spent, spent three and a half.
He spent three, he's, yeah, it was.
Took three and a half weeks of vacation.
Yeah, it was, well, yeah, 100, yeah, 200, he would have had 370 hours, 300 and, well, he could carry over 120 more than 235, so 355.
Right, so when we had, at the height of COVID, we'd actually done a motion that allowed carry over vacation time across the board, but I wondered, do you remember Chuck, if that ever had an end date?
I don't.
But, but even so, I mean, I don't think that adding more carryover is the solution, I think that the numbers get so, so large that he's never effectively.
Yeah, no, and I totally get that, I'm just trying to figure out what we need to do to.
He needs to take his vacation time.
No, I know, but do we, do we need to revise the contract, or how do we do that?
I mean.
If we only give him two weeks, it's not an issue.
I, I think, hopefully with.
Problem solved.
Hopefully, after there's an Assistant Town Administrator, you'll be able to get, you know, take more reasonable vacation time, but in the immediate term here, we need to just address this right now.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, I would suggest we buy out 80 hours and allow you to carry over whatever is left that you, you won't be able to take before June 30th, which it sounds like is 35, is that, is that accurate?
35.99, in addition to the 120.
Yeah.
And this isn't going to get you in trouble at home, right?
No, you're going to buy, buy, buy her something nice.
Yeah, exactly.
All right.
She doesn't get to see me Monday through Thursday.
Does the board have any objection to that plan?
I have an objection to the wording of it.
Oh, well, let's fix the wording of it, then.
You had something?
I, I don't have an objection to doing this, but I don't think we should, we should be encouraging him to take vacation going forward and not buying him out going forward necessarily, because it's not a good, it's not a good strategy for him.
I agree, yes.
Right. Work-life balance and mental health.
Would love to.
I know.
Pick every Monday off.
I'm thinking Mondays are perfect.